Haray Krishna, Haray Krishna Krishna Krishna, Haray Haray, Haray Ram, Haray Ram. Ram Ram, Haray Haray, Haray Krishna, Haray Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Haray Haray, Haray Ram, Haray Ram. Ram Ram, Haray Haray. Haray Krishna, so thank you for joining in for the Shla Prabhupada Book Study Session. We will start with prayers. Om Gyanam Timranthasya Jnana Jana Shalakaya Chakshurun Militam Yena Tasmay Sri Guraveenamaha. Sri Jayatanya Manobishthum Stapitum Yena Bhutale Swayam Rupa Kadaamayyam Dadaati Swa Padantikam. Vandeham Sri Goro Sriyadupadakamalam Sri Groom Vaishnavansha. Sri Rupam Sagrajatam Sahagna Raguna Thanvitam Tamsojivam. Sadvaitam Savadutam Parijana Sahhitam Sri Krishna Jayatanya Devam. Sri Radha Krishna Padan Sahaganalalita Sri Vishakhanvitamsha. Namom Vishnu Padhaya Krishna Prishthaya Bhutale Shrimate Bhaktivedanta Swami Niti Namine. Namastey Saraswade Devay Gauravani Prachari Ne Nirviseshya Shunyavadi Paschatyadeeshataari Ne. Namom Mahavadanyaya Krishna Prema Pradhayate Krishna Ya Krishna Jayatanya Namne Gaurodushenamaha. Panchatatva Atmakam Krishnam Bhakta Rupa Swarupakam Bhakta Avataram Bhakta Akhyam Namami Bhakta Shaktikam. He Krishna Karuna Sindho Dina Bandho Jagat Pathe Go Pesh Gopika Kantar Radha Kantar Namusute. Tapta Kanchana Gaurangi Radhe Vrindavanishwari Vishabhaanu Sudedevi Pranamami Hari Priyev. Vanchakalpatarubiyascha Kripas Hindu Geevicha Patitaana Ampavane Bhyo Vaishnavebhyo Namu Namaha. Jai Sri Krishna Jayatanya Prabhu Nityananda Sri Advait Kadahadar. Shri Vasadi Gaurbaktavinda Haray Krishna, Haray Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Haray Haray, Haray Ram, Haray Ram. Ram Ram, Haray Haray. Devaguru Shri La Prabhupada Ki Jay, Ishla Guru Dev Ki Janantakoji Gaurbaktavinda Ki Jay, Nitai Gaurapremanandev. Haray Haray Bo, Haya Krishna. So who all want to chant with, chant one round and start the session, you can raise your hands. Otherwise we can directly go to the study of beyond birth and death. Okay, we start with chanting. Okay, so I can see one, one person in person raising the hand and one on online hand. Okay, fine, let's chant then. Namom Vishnu Padhaya Krishna Prishthaya Bhutale Shrimate Bhaktivedanta Swami Niti Namine. Namastey Saraswade Devay Gauravani Prachari Ne Nirviseshya Shunyavadi Paschatyadeeshataari Ne. Jai Sri Krishna Jayatanya Prabhu Nityananda Sri Advait Kadahadar Shri Vasadi Gaurbaktavinda. Haray Krishna, Haray Krishna Krishna Krishna, Haray Haray, Haray Ram, Haray Ram. Ram Ram, Haray Haray.
All the places, the desert also and also in the uh in the plains, right? Where where the soil is fertile, immediately plants and trees grow and bear nice fruits. But in the desert, what happens? There is no, there is there is no growth at all, there is complete dryness. Does that mean the rain is partial? No, the rain is equal, but it depends on the captivity or the receptivity of the place. Similarly, it depends on the receptivity of our hearts, how much? Because the Lord's mercy is equal to everybody. But according to the receptivity or the um or the um capability or the capacity of our heart, ah how much of mercy can we take? Hmm, what is given by the Supreme Personality of Godhead? So that's what is explained here in an nutshell. Okay, so let's move on. Uh who wants to read now? Hmm, who was it? Lila Nandini Madhaji, you want to continue? Yeah, you continue.
Yes.
Brahma Buddha.
Ya Brahma Buddha prasannatma na sho chadi na kankshadi samaa sarvesh bhoodesho mat baktim labade param. One who is thus transcendentally situated at once realizes the Supreme Brahman. He never laments nor desires to have anything. He is equally disposed to every living entity. In that state, he attains pure devotional service unto me. Gita eighteen point fifty-four. He who has progressed in devotional service and whose relation service to Krishna will automatically become detached from material enjoyment. The symptom of one absorbed in Bhakti is that he is fully satisfied with Krishna. Hare Krishna. Thank you, Madhaji.
Hari Krishna. Yeah, so Brahma Buddha prasannatma, that means in that stage where one is not hankering for anything, one is not lamenting for anything, in that stage, one is able to perform devotional service very nicely. Otherwise, when we are hankering for so many things in this world, where will we have the affinity or the attraction to perform devotional service? So Brahma Buddha prasannatma is a basic foundation level from where one renders devotional service for the pleasure of the Lord. And then very beautifully Prabhupada completes this chapter by saying, the symptom of one absorbed in Bhakti is that he is fully satisfied with Krishna. Whatever situation I am placed in, it is happening by the mercy of the Krishna, of Lord Sri Krishna. It is happening for my purification and I will accept it with a grateful heart. Right, a grateful heart will never complain. Why all these bad things are happening to me? I am such a nice devotee. I am chanting sixteen rounds. That is not the mood of a devotee. A devotee always thinks, I am entitled to much, much worse um situations or much, much worse suffering because of my bad karmas in the past. But the Lord is giving me a token of the entire suffering that I am actually entitled to or that is due to me. But because the Lord is so merciful to me, the Lord is just giving me a token. So that by this token of suffering, I am getting purified. And when I get purified, I can go back home back to Godhead. Hmm, so in this way, this is the mercy of the Supreme Personality of Godhead. So now next chapter, we are going to chapter number five. So uh here I just want to ask that all of the, I hope all of you all have joined the sankalpa uh of chanting extra rounds of Japa. Uh and have also um updated your sankalpa in the group. Uh because we'll be sharing the, sharing the message with um with his original Jaipata Kuswami, Slagur Maraja also, our Siksha Gurus. So in this way, it should only be the mercy of Guru and Goranga that we will chant more rounds. If some of us have chanted thirty-two rounds, some of us have chanted sixty-four rounds. It does only be the mercy of Guru and Goranga, right? Sevam mukhey ji vadao, swayam eva swaratyada. Only when the Lord wants to reveal himself, then only by the mercy of Guru and Goranga, we become recipients of those mercy. Right? So if you've chanted extra rounds for Indra Ekadashi yesterday, I would request devotees can put in your sankalpa and also how many rounds you completed, the pleasure of Guru and Goranga on the auspicious occasion of Ekadashi. In case you've not, uh you're not part of the group or you've not put in the sankalpa, then send me a message. This is my number. And then uh because today by around five o'clock, I'll be sending across the message of the consolidated list of all the devotees who participated in that extra round chanting for Ekadashi. So this is my number. You can write to me, then I can share the link of the group and then you can add. Yeah, so let's move on to chapter number five. This chapter is entitled Associating With Krishna. Very wonderful, isn't it? We are talking about chanting and what does chanting mean? Chanting means we are physically in association with the Supreme Personality of Godhead Krishna. It is our personal association with Krishna. Why? Naama chintamani krishnas chaitanya rasabhi graha. Purnushuddho nikya mukto abhinatwa nama namino. There is no difference. Abhinatwa nama and namino. Nama means holy name of the Lord. Namino means the one whose name we are chanting. There is no difference. There is no abhinatwa. Abhinna, bhinna means difference. Abhinna means there is no difference between the holy name of the Lord and the Lord himself. Abhinatwa nama namino. And the chanting of the Hare Krishna Maham mantra gives us this personal association with the Supreme Personality of Godhead wherein we are personally asking the Lord, oh Lord, how can I serve you? Please engage me in your service. That is what is association with Krishna. We are not, we don't want to simply be in the same loka as the Lord or have the same rupa as the Lord or have the same opulence of the Lord or have um uh what is that um uh samipya, you know, stay close to the Lord. But without having any kind of seva bhaga, right? We don't want to simply enjoy the Lord, right? Even when you are chanting Hare Krishna Maham mantra, we need to check what is my mood? Am I chanting Hare Krishna Maham mantra to enjoy myself, right? Because it's going to relieve me of all the pain and the suffering etcetera? Or am I chanting for the pleasure of the Lord? If you're chanting for the pleasure of the Lord, we will get Krishna prema. Otherwise, we will get all the side benefits, right? Because it's purushuddho, nikya mukto, abhinatwa, right? It is non-different from the Lord. So anything that is associated with the holy name is also purifying. We will be purified, we will be getting wealth, maybe name, fame, glory etcetera. But is that what is our motive? What is our motive in chanting Hare Krishna? Our motive in chanting Hare Krishna is only one thing, which is to revive our dormant love for Krishna, to attain Krishna prema. If that is the motive, then we will attain the desired success, right? If anything else is our motive, then we will be diverted from the path and we'll be fooled uh by illusion. And we think we've achieved our goal, but we have not even started our journey towards the goal, right? So chapter five here, Prabhupada will be describing what does it, what does it mean uh to be actually in association with Krishna? Who will read now Kishori Madhaji, go ahead. If one gets something superior.
Hare Krishna Madhaji. Uh if one gets something uh superior, he naturally gives up all inferior things. We want enjoyment, but impersonalism and avoidism have created such an atmosphere that we have become addicted to material enjoyment. There uh there must be enjoyment in connection with the Supreme Person. Purushaha sa paraha whom we can see face to face in spiritual sky. In spiritual sky, we are able to speak personal, personally with God, play with him, eat with him, etcetera. All of these things, all of these can be attained by bhaktiya. Uh transcendental loving service. However, these services must be without adulter- uh adulteration.
Adulteration.
Adulteration, uh that that is, that is to say, we must allow God without expecting material uh remuneration. Allowing God to become one with him is also a form of adulteration. One of the major differences.
Yeah, so this is very important, we just discussed this. See, that is why we are saying, what is liberation, right? Liberation is also adulteration. Why? Because we are not, we are not um uh we have not given up our sense gratification, isn't it? If I want liberation, why? I don't want suffering. I don't want to suffer in this material world. I don't want any kind of suffering, right? So I just want to get relieved of this material suffering, right? So whatever I may get, I may get some kind of liberation. What is that saiyujya mukti? That means merging with effulgence of the Lord or sarupya mukti or samipya, uh samipya mukti or sarshti mukti, whatever I may get. But as long as that potency or the desire to serve the Lord for his pleasure is not there, uh whatever kind of liberation we may get, we will not get bliss. Because bliss is there only in service. As long as we want to satisfy our own senses, even if we attain the highest position of liberation from misery, Brahma Buddha prasannatma na sho chadi na kankshadi, we may attain that stage of Brahman, but we will fall down from there. Why? Because there is no bliss. Bhaktiya maam abhi janati yavan yashchasmitatvataha. Bhaktiya maam abhi janati. Only one person who is engaged in Bhakti can alone understand the Supreme Personality of Godhead, can engage in the transcendental loving service to the Supreme Personality of Godhead, right? Loving God to become one with him is also a form of adulteration. Prabhupada makes it very, very beautiful, right? Loving God to become one with him means I want to become God. I want to become free from all the sufferings. What is that? Again, I am the center of the picture. As long as I is in the center, we are going to be suffering in this material world, even if we get liberation, right? Oh, I have achieved liberation by my Ashtanga yoga process. I have attained this because of the various hostilities, right? As long as we think I have achieved something by our own personal endeavor, then we are, even if we are in a liberated state, even if we have no hankeries, even if we don't desire anything, it is just a matter of time, right? Then we will fall down. Prabhupada gives an example in one of the purports of Bhagavad Gita. Prabhupada says that those people, Ashtanga yogis who have attained liberation, who attain the stage of uh na sho chadi na kankshadi, no lamentation, no hankering, right? After some point in time, they don't, they don't get bliss. They don't get bliss. So what do they do? They come back and then they open hospitals, they open, uh you know charitable institutes. Uh and what do they do? They provide charity. Why? Because that loving reciprocation is not there with the Lord. So they want to engage in these loving reciprocation with the people by helping them. They develop this kind of loving reciprocation with the other people, right? So we all are, we are all spiritual beings who are having a human experience, right? We are all spiritual beings, we all want happiness, right? But our enjoyment has to be in connection with the Supreme Person. Purushaha sa paraha, right? The Supreme Personality of Godhead. When we enjoy serving the Supreme Personality of Godhead for his pleasure, that kind of enjoyment will give us bliss. But if we want to enjoy independent of Krishna, then we are, we will land ourselves in this material world where we do puna punas charvita charvana nam. Trying, you know, this way, that way, that way to get bliss, but always getting frustrated in all our endeavors. Hmm, so that is what there is the difference. Am I trying to satisfy my senses, bogavritti? Or am I trying to serve the, satisfy the, uh am I trying to satisfy the senses of the Lord, which is seva vritti? Seva vritti will give us bliss, bogavritti will give us frustration. So we need to decide what we want, yeah? Okay, Karbavali Madhaji, go ahead. One of the major differences.
Yes, Madhaji. Am I audible, Madhaji?
Yes, yes, Madhaji.
Thank you, Madhita Bhadana. One of the major differences between the spiritual sky and the material sky is that in the spiritual sky, the kid or leader of the spiritual planets has no rival. In all cases, the predominant personality in the spiritual planets, it's a plenary expansion of Sri Krishna. The Supreme Lord and his multifarious manifestation precede over all the Vaikunta planets. On earth, for instance, there is a rivalry for the position of president or prime minister. But in the spiritual sky, everyone acknowledges the Supreme Personality of Godhead to be supreme. Those who do not acknowledge him and attempt to rival him are placed into the material universe, which is just like a prison house. As in any city, there is a prison and the prison forms a very significant, significant part of the whole city.
Insignificant part.
Sorry, sorry, man. Insignificant part of the whole city. So the material universe is a prison for the conditioned souls. It forms an insignificant part of the spiritual sky. But it is not outside the spiritual sky, just as a prison, it is not outside the city.
Hare Krishna, thank you, Madhaji. So why are we in this material world? We are in this material world because we wanted to overpower or overthrow Krishna as a Supreme Lord, right? And then Krishna said, okay, I'll let me give you a particular, that also we are depending on Krishna. To enjoy in this material world, also we are dependent on the Lord only. Because the Lord only has created this prakriti. The Lord only has given us this material body, which is made up of earth, water, fire, air, ether. The Lord only created the material nature. So whatever objects that we find in this material world are all creations of the Supreme Personality of Godhead. And Krishna himself says, right? Um mama te joam sa sambhava. Whatever we find attractive in this material world is an amsha or is just a fragment of the opulence of the Supreme Personality of Godhead, right? And this world where we are trying to enjoy, this is compared to a prison house. That's why it's called, um it's called a fort, uh where we are, where we are all caught up here. Because we, it is a place where we are going to be, um we are going to be punished and we are going to be subject to reformation, right? Uh anybody goes to the prison house, what has he done? He's not obeyed the laws of the, uh the laws of the world or the laws as given by the leader, who's maybe the prime minister or the president, right? He's made some rules, rules and regulations. When somebody breaks those rules and regulations, he's put behind the prison, right? But that prison house, the way he behaves in that particular prison house will either lead his path to liberation or will, will, will put him into, uh you know, more and more rigorous imprisonment, right? Similarly, we are in this material world, which is a prison house, which is headed by durga. Hmm, durga means fort, right? We are in this fort of a material existence. Uh how we behave in this world, especially as human beings, we have this free will, right? Are we now obeying the rules of the Lord, which are given in the Guru Shastra, Guru Shastra and Sadhu? And in this way, we can try to go back or get out of this prison house of material existence. Or we continue with our own ways of sense gratification, trying to do whatever I want and then we get more and more entangled in the complexities of material existence. The more we get entangled, the more difficult it is, the more longer it will take for us to go back home, back to Godhead. Hmm, so we need to understand, this prison house example is given by Prabhupada. Prison house is equal to the material world, right? In prison house also, the prisoner has an opportunity to cooperate with the authority there and then in this way, get liberated and come out of the prison house. Similarly, um you know, durga devi is presenting a lot of tests for us according to our levels. If we pass those tests by surrendering to Krishna. Dhyavi hiye shugunamahi mama maya durat kaya maamey vayye prabhadyante maya meetam tarantite. If we are surrendering to the Lord in each of those tests, not getting allured by Maya, not getting allured by the fascinating objects of this material world. When we surrender to Krishna, then we will be able to get out of this entanglement of the material world. That is what is a beautiful example given by Prabhupada here about the prison house, right? Uh and everything is part of the spiritual sky, right? Everything is part of the spiritual sky means the source is one, right? This material world is just one-fourth of the entire creation, right? Paraprakriti and apparaprakriti, right? The transcendental world, the spiritual world is three-fourths, where all of them are singing and dancing for the pleasure of the Lord. Only the one-fourth people is in the prison house of this material world. Hmm, so now Prabhupada is going to talk about what are the qualities and what are the, hmm what are the um attributes of the people who are there in this spiritual world, especially in the Vaikunta planets? Okay, Ummah Maheshwari Madhaji, go ahead.
Hare Krishna, Madhaji. Tandavat pranam.
Hari Krishna. Tandavat.
The inhabitants of the Vaikunta planets in the spiritual sky are all liberated souls. In Shrimad Bhagavatam, we are informed that their bodily features are exactly like gods. On some of these planets, God is manifested with two arms and on others, he has four. The inhabitants of these planets, like the Supreme Lord, also manifest two and four arms and it is said that one cannot distinguish between them and the Supreme Person. In the spiritual world, there are five kinds of liberation. Sayuja mukti is a form of liberation in which one merges into the impersonal existence of the Supreme Lord called Brahman. Another form of liberation is sarupya mukti, by which one receives features exactly like gods. Another is salokya mukti, by which one can live in the same planet with God. By sarshti mukti, one can have opulences similar to the Supreme Lords. Another type enables one to remain always with God as one of his associates, just like Arjuna, who is always with Krishna as his friend. One can have any of these five forms of liberation, but of the five, the sayuja mukti, merging with the impersonal aspect is not accepted by Vaishnava devotees. A Vaishnava wishes to worship God as he is and retain his separate individuality to serve him. Whereas the Mayavadi impersonal philosopher wishes to lose his individuality and merge into the existence of the Supreme. This merging is recommended neither by Sri Krishna in the Bhagavad Gita nor by the disciplic succession of Vaishnava philosophers. Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu wrote on this subject in his Sishashtika, four. Na dhanam na janam na sundaram, kavitam va jagat, isha kamaye mama janmani janmaniishware, bhavatad bhaktir ahivutki tvi. Oh Almighty Lord, I have no desire to accumulate wealth nor I have, nor have I any desire to enjoy beautiful women. Nor do I want any number of followers. What I want only is that I may have your costless devotional service in my life, birth after birth.
Hare Krishna, thank you, Madhaji.
Thank you, Madhaji.
Yeah, so this is what is the desire of devotee. What is the desire of a devotee? Devotee does not want to merge with the Lord ever. Why? Because there is no opportunity to serve, because it's only light. So we are not interested in any kind of light, because anybody and everybody will fall down from that light. Because there is no bliss, isn't it? So saiyujya mukti is totally ruled out. Apart from that, the four other types which is mentioned, which is salokya, sarupya, samipya and sarshti. Hmm, all of those a devotee can accept. Like living in the same orbit as a Lord, living near the Lord, having the same form as a Lord, having the opulence of the Lord. Hmm, all that a devotee may accept, provided there is an opportunity to serve the Lord, right? Whatever talents and resources we have have been given to us by the Lord. And as long as we engage them in the service of the Lord, we are making a, we are making the right utility or the right utilization of our skills and resources. Otherwise, if you are using it for sense gratification, the same quality will only entangle us further in this material world, right? And so this merging, hmm which is merging onto the, into that, into that light, hmm is what is, uh is actually wanted or is the objective of less intelligent people, right? Because an intelligent person knows what is it that is going to give me eternal pleasure and engages in the service of the Lord. Yet it's only those, uh and um it's only those who are seeking after temporary pleasures, who are, who are illusioned by Maya. They think that simply by engaging in, uh you know, uh in eating more or in seeing or smelling nice wonderful foodstuffs or you know, whatever, you know, giving, giving something, a pleasurable thing by seeing some, uh you know, create. That will be seeing the creations of the Lord only. But what is our consciousness? Am I trying to enjoy and exploit the material nature? Or am I in awe, in, you know, am I in appreciation? Oh, this beautiful world has been created by the Lord. Am I in appreciation of the Lord? Right, otherwise eyes is the same, the material nature is the same. But what is our consciousness? That is what is the difference. What is the consciousness in which we are looking at these things? And what is the devotee's consciousness? Prabhupada is mentioning here. Na dhanam na janam na sundaram, kavitam va jagat isha kamaye mama janmani janmaniishware, bhavatad bhaktir ahivutki tvi. This is the devotee's consciousness. Life after life, my only desire is to engage in your service in an unmotivated and uninterrupted way, right? So here Prabhupada is talking, I mean, Prabhupada is going to explain further. Chaitanya Mahaprabhu is talking about mama janmani janmaniishware. That means life after life, this is my only desire. Hmm, so let's see what it is. Um so who's reading now? Uh yeah, Akirti Madhaji, we'll end with you, yes. Go ahead, Madhaji. Here Lord Chaitanya refers to birth after birth.
Yeah, Hare Krishna, Madhaji. Tandavat pranam.
Hari Krishna. Tandavat pranam.
Here Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu refers to birth after birth. When there is birth after birth, there is no liberation. In liberation, one either attains the spiritual planets or merges into the existence of the Supreme. In either case, there is no question of rebirth into the material world. But Chaitanya Mahaprabhu does not care whether he is liberated or not. His only concern is to be engaged in Krishna consciousness, to serve the Supreme Lord. The devotee doesn't care where he is, nor does he care whether he is born in the animal society, human society, demigod society or whatever. He only, he only prays to God. He only prays to God that he not forget him and that he always be able to engage in his transcendental service. These are symptoms of pure devotion. Of course, a devotee, wherever he is, remains in the spiritual kingdom, even while in this material body. But he does not demand anything from God for his own personal elevation or comfort. Hare Krishna, Madhaji.
Hare Krishna. Tandavat pranam, Madhaji, thank you. So very, very wonderful uh ending, right? What is pure devotion, right? Annyabi laa shita shunyam nyanakarma gyanavritam. Anu ko liyena Krishna anushilena bhaktiruttama. And you all need to know the definition of pure devotional service. This is given, it is repeated in Chaitanya Charitamritta, it's also given by Rupadaswami in Bhaktira Samritta Sindhu, right? Mama janmani janmaniishware bhavatad bhaktir ahivutki tvi. Life after life after life, that is only my only desire. That means I want to simply engage in your devotional service. Prabhupada is talking about, these are the symptoms of pure devotion. And even while being in this material world, uh one can be transcendent through three modes of material nature, provided one's consciousness is of seva vritti and not of bogavritti. Hmm, so with this, we will end here. Jagat guru Srila Prabhupada ki jai, Slagur Deva ki jai, Anantakoti Gorabhaktavindha ki jai, Nithai Gorapremanande hari hari bol. So let's see who all we have in our today's session and then we'll do two, three minutes of Hari Nam Sangkiratan and then we'll meet Mulharo. Again, a quick reminder to those devotees who have not yet updated your sankalpa and uh how many rounds you've chanted for Indra Ekadashi. So please message me in case you're not part of the group, I'll add you in the group. And those of you who have already given you your sankalpa, kindly update your actual completion of rounds. So um for the pleasure of Guru and Goranga, we're doing this. And by their blessings, we'll be able to chant more. It is only by their blessings, what we are able to do now is by their blessings. And when we please them, then we will, we will access their mercy more and more and we can do more and more, right? That's why we always say. Mukam karoti vachalam, pangum langa yate girem, yat krpatamaham vande shri guru dina tharinam, paramananda madavam, shri Krishna chaitani Ishwaram, hari om tatsat, right? A uh uh a dumb person can speak eloquently, right? Mukam karoti vachalam, pangum langa yate girem. A cripple person can cross mountains. Yat krpatamaham vande shri guru dina tharinam. If he's got the mercy of Guru, Goranga and Krishna, right? Shri Guru dina tharinam, paramananda madavam, shri Krishna chaitani Ishwaram. If he's got the mercy of Guru, Goranga and Krishna, then anything is possible. Any miracle uh can be possible by us, right? So in this way, uh please update in the group. Uh if you're not able to update in the group, you send me a personal message and then I'll add it in the, add in the group like that. All right, so Vanchakalpa Tharubiyascha, Kripasindu Bheevicha, Patitana Pavane Bheo, Vaishnave Bheo, Namo namaha. Anantakoti Vaishnava Bhandha Ki Jai Jagat Guru Srila Prabhupada Ki Jai. So this is my number, you can write to me, yeah? Okay, my name is Medhavani Sakidhivadasi, all right. So we quickly do Hari Nam Sangkiratan. Namah om dishno padaya, Krishna prishaya bhootale, Shrimate bhaktivedanta, kaminipinamine. Namaskar saraswate devi, gauravani prachariné. Ne viseshashunyavadi, aaj chakkaari shadari ne. Jayya shri Krishna chaitanya, prabho nityananda. Sri advaita agaranaa shiva sadhi, gaurabhakabinda. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Jaya gauranitai, jaya gauranitai, gauranitai, jaya gauranitai, jaya, jaya prabhu pa, prabhu pa. Hore, goro, mitai gora hari bol, gora hari bol, gora hari bol, gora hari bol. Jagat guru Srila Prabhupada, Slagur Deva Ki Jai, Anantakoti Gorabhaktavindha Ki Jai, Nithai Gorapremanande hari hari bol. All Lordies, Assamal devotees, Hare Krishna. All Lordies, Assamal devotees, Hare Krishna. All Lordies, Assamal devotees, Hare Krishna. All Lordies, all Lordies. Shri Shri Guru and Sri Goranga, Shla Prabhupada Ki Jai, thank you. Hare Krishna, Shla Prabhupada Ki Jai. Uh so in case anyone has any questions or comments, uh you can um, uh you can share that now. I hope everyone has put your, anybody who's not put in this group, who's not updated the Ekadashi sankalpa group. How nicely you recite shloka. Yeah, Madhaji, I'm sending this audio in the group every day morning. So you can recite, because it's the same slokas, it is the, it is the invocation verses and Chaturshloki versus Bhagavat Gita and Bhagavatam. So if you, uh if you hear it and then you recite those slokas again and again, then you'll be able to get those slokas. Okay, Sneha Prabha Madhaji, Hare Krishna.
I really get things. I mesmerize Madhaji, even I hear from you. Even though Ekadashi, I hear that whole Bhagavat Gita, Shloka, the way you go on, it is such a, I mean, um uh unimaginable, you know? It is so sweet to hear. Please, yeah.
Thank you.
Guide us how to remember them, you know? Uh that is important.
The more we practice, Madhaji, we'll be able to remember. Every day morning, we can practice reciting the same slokas, right? Bhagavat Gita, Chaturshloki, Bhagavatam, Chaturshloki versus, we start with that, Chaitanya Charitamritta, Mangalacharan versus. When we do that, when we practice, then automatically, like how we, we don't remember, nah, where, where, where we have to take our brush, where we have to put the paste, isn't it? It has become natural to us. So that is what we want to make Krishna consciousness a way of life, hmm? That we want to just simply, uh that is how it will be at the time of death, right? We are not conscious. So whatever is in our subconscious mind, that is what will come out, right? So that is what we, now, now we are so used to not eating onion, garlic, not having for morning coffee, tea, etcetera. This has become a way of life for us, right? Similarly, chanting of verses of Bhagavat Gita, Bhagavatam, Chaitanya Charitamritta, especially chanting Hare Krishna has to become so natural for us. Then only we can remember Krishna at the time of death, right? So this entire lifetime is a preparation. Every time, every situation, we want to remember Krishna by taking shelter. So this entire lifetime is a preparation. Every time, every situation, we want to remember Krishna by taking shelter of the holy names of the Lord. By chanting the verses of the Bhagavad Gita, Bhagavatam, we know Gajendra, how he got liberated or he got the darshan of the Lord simply by reciting prayers. And he was able to remember by the mercy of the Lord. He is an elephant, right? So in this way, when we keep practicing, uh then we will be able to attain that stage, Madhaji. I am also trying, right, with the blessings of the Vaishnavas, we can all try uh to always remember Krishna, never forget Krishna by taking shelter of the holy names, by taking uh shelter of these verses. Hmm. Uh by, by taking shelter of the instructions of Guru and Goranga. Hmm. As in this way, we will always remember Krishna. Okay, Madhaji? I hope that helps. Right? Daily practice is a solution. Okay, Madhaji?
Hare Krishna. Thank you, Madhaji. Thank you so much.
Hare Krishna. Tandavatpanam.
Madhaji, if possible, can you share the Chaturshloki, Bhagavatam and Bhag, Bhagavad Gita shlokas?
Uh yeah, I'll share it.
Yeah, thank you.
I shared it in the, yeah.
Madhaji, Mangla Charan prayers, Madhaji. Mangla Charan prayers. Before each, the singer praying that Mangla Charan, Madhaji, that.
Yeah, it's there in the Bhagavad Gita. The first, if you open the Bhagavad Gita, it is there in the first prayers. Yeah, Bhagavad Gita, Vaishnilaprapad, Bhagavad Gita as it is, then the, all the invocation prayers are there in the first two pages. Starting with the offering of prayers to, and everything is there, okay? And I will uh uh this Bhagavad Gita, Chaturshloki versus is uh ten point uh, ten point eight to eleven. Sneha Prabha Madhaji, you can note it down. Ten point eight to ten point eleven, Bhagavad Gita, Chaturshloki versus.
Fine, ten point eight to eleven, alright.
Bhagavad Gita.
Thank you, thank you, Madhaji.
Hare Krishna.
Hare Krishna.
Thank you. Meet you tomorrow morning for the, for our Brahman Murtha chanting session. And also secondly, please update your sankalpa and your round completion in the group. About nearly close to thirty-five, thirty-six devotees have already updated. So you know, we will be sharing it in the evening today. So please take advantage of that and update your name and your sankalpa. Hare Krishna. Shilaprapad Ki Jai, Shilagurdev Ki Jai. Thank you.